Address colonial land disposition and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be saved. The Expropriation Bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve challenges of land. Available to pay for land must be given to black small farmers.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I am Bonanen Llin. Hello, my partner is Nkumala. Deputy Secretary Charles was here today. I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it. So, we have to do something to save it. I would like to say that we do not understand why parliament is spending money on this process, where there is a process to amend the constitution. And thereafter, amending the constitution, this committee must bring a legislation informed by the constitution. We made our submission into parliamentary public hearing on the land question and we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. We are concerned that the expropriation bill that you want us to make input on, its legislation must tell us now the constitution allows for expropriation of all land without compensation. This is how the state is going to expropriate land. This is how the land is going to be distributed, all everyone equally, and this is how our right to use the land is going to be protected. But since you are here, you must know that our position remains the same, it still has got our bare the banding. We want all lands to be expropriated without compensation. This is the only way we will address the colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give parliamentary a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be for sale. The expropriation bill is an unnecessary distraction and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses and build businesses and the expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of this thing. The legislation above the constitution, so I want to say that we have lost a lot of land. As for the issue of land.
Therefore, that the land must come back to the people. We don't want you to come back here so that we can do the very same thing again.
I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it. So, we have to do something to save it. Like, for example, Anderson Street. In Anderson Street, before, there was a building named after prostitution. The government, it was a building that was being built since the beginning of the century. It is still the very same thing, you know. Because, as we know, the government, the institution, it was a building that was being built. Like, the property, it was Anderson Street. In Anderson Street, before, there was a building named after prostitution. The government, it was a building that was being built since the beginning of the century. It is still the very same thing, you know. Because, as we know, the government, the institution, it was a building that was being built. Like, the property, it was Anderson Street. 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 Like, the property, it was Anderson Street.
In Bumbela? A lot of people reside in areas which are under the jurisdiction of traditional leaders. And those people do not have title deeds. This means that they do not own that land, they don't own anything. I therefore do not agree that a government should, that land should go to government because we cannot trust this government. The same thing that has happened at SAA, South African Airways, at SAPC, is going to happen with the land if we agree to give it back to government. We can't trust our government. For instance, in Nelsprade, we have Anderson Street. There are buildings there which the government claims it does not know to whom they belong. And in the past, this used to be a respectable area, but now, there is a prostitution that is taking place at Anderson Street. If government were to take back the land, our food security would be in jeopardy. Let the land stay where it is because otherwise, a lot of black people are going to lose their lives in fighting, when they fight among themselves for the land. The whole process of a land restitution has been wrong from the beginning because ordinary people are not benefiting from that land. You find high-profile people, such as politicians, who have acquired land and farms and they stay in these farms all alone and while the ordinary person is still landless.
I am Basil Anthony from Bumbela, residing in Ward 17. With reference to the tabling of the Expropriation Bill, 23 of 2020, by the Department of Public Works and Infrastructure, the Democratic Alliance is absolutely committed to the idea of land reform and transformation. However, the purpose of the new bill, despite what is being bundled around, is not for land reform. The bill is being tabled with a view to repealing the existing Expropriation Act of 1975, as well as to give effect to the amendment of section 25 to allow for expropriation without compensation. The Democratic Alliance is against expropriation without compensation, simply because this is unfair as land, property owners have paid for their land. This will also negatively impact the banking sector as mortgages will go into arrears and banks will struggle to recover outstanding monies. Secondly, the Democratic Alliance wants title deeds to be given to owners who have paid up their mortgages in order for them to take a loan against a property to improve their lives and maintain properties. Lastly, the bill is vague in many ways. That is, property, public purpose and public interest are not sufficiently defined in the bill and could lead to potential exploitation. Furthermore, the term property relates to all property and is not limited to land. If public purpose or public interest can be shown, any property can be expropriated as it currently stands. Expropriation without compensation, however, relates purely to land. This requires clarity. It is extremely important to understand that the main purpose of the Expropriation Bill is to give government the power to expropriate property for public purpose and in the public interest. The Democratic Alliance objects to the bill based on vague and undefined guidelines, protocols. So this bill is not being promulgated for land reform purpose and will not be the answer to the current land reform crisis. Thank you.
Madam Chair, my name is Glainster Janssen van Rensburg. I represent the Democratic Alliance here today and I do not accept the bill as it stands. It is not clear and it centralizes power in the state instead of distributing power to the people so that the people can run the economy in the country and can create jobs and can take charge of their lives. We've had centralization of different aspects of service rendering to our people. Initially, it was water and we had water taps in the houses, but now we have water cars. As soon as government starts taking over and centralizing power, it creates the basis for corruption and the service delivery deteriorates to the people. The second aspect that was taken over was mineral rights on land and that gave us Maricana. We don't need situations like that. We need the mining sector to grow and we need the economy to grow. If land expropriation as it stands in this bill goes ahead, it will damage our economy beyond repair and we will not be in a position to resuscitate our economy and to give our people an opportunity to get fair compensation for investing their energy, their money, their time in developing their private properties as homes and own it themselves to be able to transfer it to their children when they are no longer there. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you too. We are then going for another round of speakers. Yeah, we're starting in this row now. If it may have happened that we pointed people in the row and you were not there, another That hand that is there at the back, no, no, yeah, this one, can you come to this side? Yeah, we will point you if you are on this row. Can you please raise the hand, number one at the back, you are number two. Number three, the blue shirt, yeah. This is Angapambil. Number three, we have not started with this row, Puti. Yeah, we are still here. Can you please, see, when we point, don't fill the seat of someone else vacated because the person that appointed it was sitting in that, exactly the chair. Okay, it's number three, number four, number five. Yes. Number six at the back, yes. Number seven, yeah. Yeah, number six, number seven, number eight, yeah, you, yes. Number nine, yes. And then number 10. It's your hand, but you're pointing at someone else. Okay, give the lady as number 10. Yeah, we'll start with you, Puti, when you come for the next round, yes.
My name is Ifison Kuna from Koma Zesap Region, Ward 3. I'm a member of EFF Labour Desk. Chaplain of the session in the committee, we don't understand why you're here because last time you were here, we told you that don't come back again here because we've already made our submission. But since you're here, we cannot just leave you like that to go. Number one, we made our submission in two public hearings, one it was selling this house, and then we don't understand why you're here again. Okay, let me go on. We made our submission in two parliamentary public hearings on the land question and we told members of parliament to go and amend the constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state, that the state must be the custodian of the land. We are concerned that must tell us now that the constitution allows expropriation of land without compensation, this is how the state is going to expropriate land, this is how the land is going to be distributed to everyone, everyone equally, and to how our right to use the land is going to be pursued. We did not give parliament a mandate to find ways of paying for the stolen land. The expropriation bill, and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggle of black people and will not solve the challenge. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm and build houses and build businesses and expropriation bill is not going to help us in doing any of this thing, the situation. The moment of truth is now, so we want to give you this to black people, especially most of the black people who are here, that the ending of apartheid did not end racism. Ending of apartheid did not bring economic freedom. Ending of apartheid did not bring inequality. Ending of apartheid still leave black people in rural areas stuffed like oranges whatsoever. There is no white person in his house who live with cacti, only black people. So, there is no white person who live in the 30 by 30 yard, only those who live in flats who owns nothing. And then those ones are the one who wasted their money because before 1994, they made sure that they stole everything and put in their coffers. If you want us to come here again and explain this bill, please, you must come with a jubail and sons, proof of payment of that land which they own here. We understand that you politicians, especially ANC people, you are wasting our time because Cyril Ramaphosa owns a farm in Bad Place, Didi Mabouzha owns a farm in Babaton. So, everyone, Matthew Pauls are the first prime of this province, also live there.
Time is up.
I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it. So, we have to do something to save it. Like, the property, it was Anderson Street. 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 Like, the property, it was Anderson Street.
Thank you. Just before you come, Puti, as you all know, that you are only allowed to have only 250 people inside, we can't have more. There are many people outside that would like to come in and use. So what we are going to do, on the open seats on this side, all those from those rows that we have already pointed, there also, we must also, Ms. Martinis, even the third row, there are many open seats on this side. Can we remove them? We are appealing to those that are sitting on row number four to come to this side. On row number four, Puti, yeah, your row. The reason we want them to go to that side is because when we are through with the last row, we'll then go and start there because, Bonna, they will have come in while we are speaking. Can then, yeah, Isa.
The gentleman did not introduce himself. This is what he had to say. Greetings to all of you who are here and greetings to the chaplain. I am also in favor of the land going back to the people. However, nobody, not the government, not the unions.
Sorry ma'am, sorry ma'am, I don't know what the movement is for now. Please continue.
Thank you. However, nobody, including the government and the unions, is able to exercise any control over our children. Children today demand free education. There is also talk of section 103. There are three books, very important books in South Africa that one should familiarize oneself with. We have the laws of South Africa, we have the Freedom Charter and we have the Constitution. However, these three things contradict each other or one another. Throughout these proceedings, I have heard nobody mention anything about the tragedy that happened at Lily Mine in Lowes Creek. That up until today, those people are still trapped underground, no one is talking about that. And yet you come here and you tell us that you are going to give us our land back. Where are you going to get that land? Where will that land come from? The tragedy that happened at Lily Mine is also detrimental to our people because it has led to the closure of that mine and the closure of that mine means that people do not have work, they have no way to work. Where are the traditional leaders in all of what is happening? I don't see them playing any role.
I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it. I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it. I want to say that we have lost a lot of land and we need to save it.